Man, having this gavel up here is better than having the remote control at home. They're just, kind of, the world stops for a moment. Thank you for being with us today. This is our last council meeting in the month of November. I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
I agree.
By Mr. Lawrence.
I will, second.
And the second, I'm sorry, I didn't catch your second, by...
Councilman Gines.
Guns, okay.
G-I-N-E-S.
Capital G, all right? Thank you. So, any discussion about the agenda? As we have it here, there being none. All in favor of adopting the agendas presented? It's approved on a 7-0 vote there for the clerk. Thank you. All right, Mr. Mayor, you're up.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Welcome, everyone, as well. And I'm gonna invite Ms. Hunt into, up to the, or whoever wants to get his report on Mardi Gras. And you have brought bread? You've come with bread?
I'm here, right?
Got bread.
Thank you. Got bread and introduce.
Right, I'm gonna introduce her. This is, of course, Abreza Thomas. Abreza is our new directorative of the Coastal Mississippi.
Ms. Hunt, excuse me. If you could talk into the mic, we want the world to hear what you're saying. Thank you.
I don't think I need a microphone. I'll need a microphone.
The World Wide Web needs it.
Okay. Now that you said that, sir, I understand, I just wanna just say one thing about the Mardi Gras, about our museum, and Abreza's gonna give you a lot more information. We are in a membership drive, and since you're making me use a microphone, Dr. Tisdale, you can join for $500, a royal. We have a royal membership for 500, friends of the museum 250, family 100, individual 75, and seniors 40. So, I will be leaving these for all of y'all. We'd love to have you join the museum. You got that, ma'am?
We got it.
Thank you, Ms. Hunt, I think.
I agree.
All right, come on.
Hello. Can everybody hear me okay?
Sure.
All right. As Ms. Hunt mentioned, we have a membership campaign going. Museums are sustained partially through memberships and the support of the community. So, if you guys are able, it would mean a lot to us to be able to continue developing the museum, growing it, and, of course, putting out new programming, which we do have on the books as well. Visitation is a little slow right now. I think a lot of things are, but just the general season. But we have officially started planning 12th night. That'll be Sunday, January 5th. If you're able, please come and see City Hall become illuminated in carnival colors to kick off the season officially.
I dropped the sound.
Yes, it's a Sunday evening, so hopefully, everybody should be able to be there. I really think that's it, Ms. Susan.
Thank you. And if you would, tell us your name again, please.
My name is Abreza, A-B-R-E-Z-A.
Abreza, thank you, Abreza.
Thank you.
Anything else, Ms. Hunt?
Yeah, we'll be getting information.
You'll get to the mic, please, Ms. Hunt. I'm telling you, this is better than having the remote control at home.
I'll hammer them down. Uh, you, um, call Officer DeBeck today, and he is going to give me, he's gonna have someone help me fill out the application for the children's marching parade for Mardi Gras, so you all will, I'll keep you posted. We're working through Sherry Bell, and, of course, so keep you posted on where it's gonna start, the whole nine yards.
Mardi Gras, the 3rd of March? What is, what day is it, Mardi Gras this year?
Mardi Gras?
Day, yeah, the 2nd, March the 3rd.
What day is it gonna be on? I wanna say, in March.
March 4th.
It's March 4th, yes. So, we have only two months. Okay?
All right, very good.
Don't worry, I will be a streetwalker on Mardi Gras day.
Still official, you're still official.
I am the official, streetwalker on Mardi Gras.
Thank you, Ms. Hunt, thank you, Abreza, appreciate it. And now, I think we got some third-quarter longevity awards to present.
Thank you, Jamie, for searching for a mic. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so, we're gonna do quarter two and quarter three longevity awards. Um, let's see here. First, we'll start with quarter two. We have Ms. Tara Busby, five years in community development. And then, quarter three, we have Kimberly Hudson, Labor Public Works Department, five years. John Major, Public Affairs Specialist Administration, 10 years. Richard McLeod, Fire Inspector, Fire Department, 20 years. Nicholas Geiser, Director of the Fire Department, 20 years. And then, lastly, Lionel Brent Hodge, Utility Crew Supervisor, Public Works, 35 years.
All right.
Everybody, come on in, give us our quick questions.
All right. I want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving coming up this week, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, we have no departmental reports. We'll move to council reports. Mr. Lawrence.
I would like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. Also, Sunday, we had the special need banquet at the Donald Snyder's Inn, and probably had 200 people there. Paul was there, Rodney, the mayor come in. I know he was busy, ma'am, he had all kind of stuff to do. But anyway, that really turned out, it was a nice crowd, it was a big crowd for that, so that was a good thing. The next thing I do is something I got to explain, and this is for the City Council, so everybody can listen to this. Something we've been passing in the city, I know we vote for it, and we'll be getting blamed when it's wrong. To explain a few things, cottages are secondary homes when they have a major home on a piece of property. You cannot build a cottage on a piece of land by itself. It has to be attached to the main house. The power has to run through the main house. So, us building cottages out there, I don't know if you gotta call them something else, but in I L D O, there's no such thing as a cottage unless it's attached to the main house on a piece of property. The second one is the H O, H O L, and P O L, you cannot do that in sheds. You cannot separate sheds, there's nothing, L D O gives us permission to separate sheds and call them individual, whatever you wanna call them. You can't do that. We don't have anything in the L D O states you can do that. The P D I don't do that, waterfront don't do it, sheds are sheds, a garage, boat sheds, boat stores, you cannot separate them. And you can't have an H O, what is it, H A O or P O A to palm that, some kind, on a shed. So, that's another thing that we passed that was, wasn't right, wasn't up to the L D O book that we have. Let's see, the, the ones, this is the big one, I've been trying to get Peter to get this straight for me. Those shrimp factory, whatever you wanna call those little houses, shotgun houses across from the blake, you can't grant a variance on a P D C, nobody. It don't, you don't have any variance. You can do setbacks, but you can't do a variance. And a variance, if you do one, have to go to the City Council, but there's no such thing as a variance on a P C D. You can't do it. You can only deal with a setback. So, right now, that bunch is built out of contest completely. And I read through this here, I had people look at it, you can't find anything where any stuff is stated against any of this. It's pretty clear, but you can't do it. And it states that in all these things. So, I wanna make sure our new two councilmen learn the right laws, there might be other ways to do these things, but the work, the work is done, after all, this is out of compliance with the L D O. And the same thing with the shrimp houses on Highway 90. Five years, I mean, five resolution, 24 months, and we passed something we really know we ever passed. The biggest problem I have with that, Elliot sold everything out. So, he was there for two years with Elliot home, and what he does, he gets both of these things passed, and then he sells. And that's what we wind up holding a bag on half these things. And we're gonna have to suffer with these pieces of land that are done wrong. So, I asked Peter if we have to get an opinion for somebody else. I mean, you can't keep breaking the laws of the L D O and say it doesn't really matter. We have L D O laws, we have to follow them. And I tell them all the time, I tell Jerry, you can change anything you want, that's what we do. That's what the City Council does. The mayor and Jerry, you gotta make sure things are done right. I mean, y'all wanna get indicted, go to jail, that's up to y'all. I'm not getting indicted for anybody, or doing anything wrong, or breaking any laws. There's no reason to do it. The other way is to hammer the thing the right way. And the last thing, though, on, for you, Fofo, is the audit, we two years behind, and where we at, is forward getting any closer? Do we have to bring somebody else in?
By the end of this month, is what.
Yeah. I mean, because that's, you know, all this is, are we gonna have both years or just one year?
Twenty-three, we'll finish.
Because, I mean, they're, everybody needs to have the true numbers for what's due coming.
We're expecting 23, we're, we're expecting 24 by the, by March of '25. So, I mean, what we've done, this is 96, is I think the last set of questions, and it was four special program reviews, I think they're, they're done, but Diana's in conversation with A V L, and I, good cop, bad cop, I'm expecting that by the end of next week.
So, y'all getting close? I mean, I didn't know, you had to go through the state audit to get this done, or are y'all gonna handle it?
You know, according to, you know, the standards, and those four special programs that were over $890,000 that had to be done, and that was the four items that we spent, you know, I know Rachel spent a bunch of time preparing a booklet for each one of them, and I think that's completed, and I'm expecting things by the end of, you know, this month.
All right. And the last thing, there was on TV about the Broadwater, they settled it down to seven people. Is anybody left at all on Broadwater now, chief?
Chief, I don't know what, we heard any, the population that that homeless and y'all took, or the census you took, might wanna give a little update on that.
So, right this minute, I can't tell you who's out there, but, but we went through, did a census, and advised everyone they had to leave, and we gave them a few hours to leave. So, I'm sure the majority of them have left, we'll check on that, but there's always gonna be a few that are gonna try to be stragglers that we'll have to deal with.
Well, how far have we went with cutting, you cut it all down, they'll leave, I mean, we're gonna finish doing that?
Well, I think they cleared the pathway so you could take the, take the census.
They did, they cleared some roads, yeah.
The group that, that your officers went in with, from the Homeless Coalition, they went into the woods for about four hours, and they were only able to find seven, seven homeless people. They got them all, they got the dad on them, they're, they're working those cases, and they said there were a few camps that they saw empty, no, nobody was in there, but that was, that's a third the number it was the last time around, way down.
They've all been told they have to go, so we'll, we'll see, we'll give them an opportunity to get their stuff and get going, and if they don't, we'll, we'll deal with it.
Well, time will tell, though, by calls for service in there, if they populated, it's like the tide, comes in and comes out.
Oh, yeah.
I think that's what we're gonna be facing, is what we're gonna be preparing for, I think.
That's right.
Activity that will come, because population moved back, we'll be prepared to get at least into the woods to, to see the status of who's doing what.
All right.
That's good, because, you know, you made all the statements up here, that we're working on the homeless, and if people see that we're doing everything we're trying to do, at least we're working on it, trying to move them, and try to take care of the citizens of the city of Bucksie. So, that's a good thing.
Councilman, in addition to that, the methadone clinic, I think, I think Peter can fill you in on the methadone clinic.
That's the one on Pass Road?
Pass Road, that backs up to the, east of the Irish Street, and there was a big piece of property that bumped up against what was cleared from Cotton's.
Yeah, we, a letter's gone to the clinic, and Jerry can update on that.
Handoff.
Anytime that someone's been issued a conditional use permit, and we start to have problems with them where they're not in compliance with the conditions that were placed on them when they moved in, then we started off, just like we do any other case, we send them a letter, putting them on notice that there are some things that are out of compliance, and if those things aren't corrected within a certain period of time, then we're gonna take action to have their conditional use permit revoked. We've sent a letter to the owners, making them aware that they had 14 days to clean up the property. They're in the dumpster, there are cups with chemical in it, it's just being thrown into the dumpster, and naturally, that's gonna attract certain people to come dig through the dumpster, you know, to try to find what's going on. We got pictures of all of this. After the 14 days, we went back out there, and the problem has not been resolved, so the next step is to have a hearing with them before the Planning Commission, which will be the first step, where it's handled just like any other appeal. We go in and we make our case about what's wrong, they can come in and make their arguments about whatever. The Planning Commission would vote on it, and then make a recommendation to the City Council, and ultimately, the City Council would, would do the final vote on whether or not the conditional use permit gets revoked. We're putting the letter together now to send to them, letting them know that they're, they did not comply as the 14-day letter had stated, and that we're taking steps to go ahead and set up the hearing with the Planning Commission to revoke their permit. That's where we are right now.
Jerry, you said 14 days, how much longer before you do the public?
It's expired already.
I said, then, how long to the public hearing?
We'll have to advertise it, just like we do any other public hearing, so it's probably gonna be four weeks to, or so, but we're, that's what we're doing, so.
All right, thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence, Mr. Gines.
Yeah, I just wanna wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, and just remind everybody, tomorrow, there's a senior talent show at the Biloxi Civic Center, so please come on out and see our seniors do their talent tomorrow, and just...
That was today.
Oh, was it today?
Yeah.
I missed it, oh, I'm a day off. God dog it. I blew it.
It sounded good.
It sounded good, too. I was on a roll.
Maybe the finals tomorrow.
Okay. And just wanna make a point to the chair, when we make a point of order, you have to recognize that, and I think we missed that a couple of times with me, and I think we may just need to brush up on that, so things like last week won't continue to happen. Thank you.
Councilman Gines, let me interject. I think, Sherry, we had 23 contestants today.
Oh!
Who wasn't there?
And I plan on bringing Mama tomorrow.
Yeah.
All right. All right, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Ms. Newman?
No, of course.
Mr. McGilvery?
Just a couple of things. The power company is out on the Pops Ferry Bridge, replacing, I think there's about a dozen lights out there, they started this morning, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. McGilvery, Mr. Glavine.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanna first start off by extending my, I guess, sympathies to Captain Ricky, 75-year-old shrimper that's presumed lost, and they found his boat, the Linda K. The Linda K is the oldest working shrimp boat in Biloxi, built in the 1920s, I believe. So, send out our hearts and our thoughts and prayers to the family. I also wanna thank all that attended last Thursday's Town Hall meeting. Thank you, Mayor, directors, council members that were able to show up, and a special thanks to Tanner. He went over and above getting the room set up, we, standing room only, but again, those pesharadas are quite a draw that my wife prepared. And also, I'd like to thank Superintendent Marcus Boudreaux for recommending that I come over and look at the venue, very unique venue, and hope to have another meeting or two there in the near future. I also attended Director Levitod's Cedar Lake Bridge kinda workshop and meeting, kinda compelling FEMA, MEMA, and others were there to kinda walk through the basic outline of that program. It's either do nothing, repair, replace, or relocate, and there'll be subsequent meetings in the future as we work through that process. Doesn't look like something will happen soon, but at least the ball is rolling to see what can and what needs to be done. Also, I'd like to mention that the Biloxi Upper Elementary, there's two proposals. One is the existing upper elementary on Father Ryan. There's another proposal to build a brand-new upper elementary off of Pops Ferry Road, near the First Baptist Church. Both of them have pros and cons. There'll be a meeting December, make sure I get this right, December 4th, on the campus of Biloxi High School, at the Performing Arts Center. The meeting's gonna begin at 5:00 PM. So, if anybody's interested to come listen, I think it's gonna be a very interesting meeting. The facility is being proposed, we'll be able to accommodate 1,000 students, and it's just a testimony of Biloxi growing and trying to meet the needs of our community. Couple other issues, Eden Place Drainage was bought up during the Town Hall meeting, I think Mike's on top of it, and we're just kinda reviewing and assessing it. It seems like there, there is a need, there, there may be an opportunity, but we don't know until we get a little deeper into it, and it's gonna take some collaboration if we can solve that problem. Also, Live Oak by the Bay, kinda visit with those folks after the meeting, they asked me to come out, had a meeting yesterday, and I think there's been a submission of a request for the Traffic Committee to consider possibly a flashing sign, children at play. When you turn into Live Oak by the Bay, it's one straightaway, from the front end all the way to the back end, and there's some additional housing being built, so the population in that neighborhood is growing, so perhaps that will be a deterrent. They did talk about speed tables, but they wanted to consider perhaps a flashing sign when it senses somebody coming into that neighborhood might be the right deterrent for that neighborhood. And then, the, the final item I have, my uncle Kenny Pataolo passed away Friday, and I would ask the council to afford me to close in his memory. Kenny graduated from Biloxi High School, most athletic. He married his high school sweetheart, Sherry Ellis. She was, by the way, Miss B H S. They just celebrated last week their 55th anniversary. He's a Vietnam vet, very interesting man, and my heart's go out to the Ellis family, the Pataolo family, they're, both families are very close-knit, and I'm sure they're, they're gonna sense that loss during Thanksgiving.
Hey, Paul, can I ask Kenny a question?
Wait, just a minute, let me see if he's done.
No, that, that concludes my report, thank you.
All right. Go ahead, George.
Copswine, that was Ricky Copswine, Kenny?
Yep, Richard Ricky, yep.
He always, he always shrimp, he always shrimp by himself.
Yep.
Every time, didn't go with anybody. The other thing, when they ask on the Father Ryan, if you're removing all the schools out of there, what we gonna have left in there? Nothing.
I, listen, this is just a workshop, that I understand, I don't have a lot of information myself, and I'm not leading this charge, they're just, I think they have control of that property, and they're gonna talk about both the pros and cons of each one, and then what would the repurpose look, you know, if they did make the change, what, what, how could they repurpose that, that property? If that, that did happen.
It would, I think I've heard regarding making that, whatever they do not remove as part of the alternative school, I think, the existing building, and then, you know, freeing up some of the space for, green space for parks, maybe?
I'm just trying to, yeah.
If it goes to another place.
I'm just trying to figure out, we have any schools left in Biloxi?
Yeah.
I mean, you know, Biloxi's still Biloxi. We don't need to strip all the schools, the elementary schools up, or whatever they call these grades nowadays, but I mean, that's something you need to look at, to me. It's not, it's not right.
School board.
It's decided itself.
Consider that, and I'm sure they're gonna have a number of hearings to hammer that out.
All right, Mr. Shoemaker, go ahead.
Just a few things. Cedar Lake Bridge meeting, I was there as well last week. I learned a few things I didn't know. Hopefully, I look forward to, well, hopefully, in the future, we're gonna have, I think, probably, it's gonna be a little while, but we'll have some more meetings, and I look forward to that. There's definitely a little more to that than I really had thought and anticipated, but I think that's a good thing, at least that the ball's in motion, and the wheels are turning now for that. Christmas Parade in Wool Market, December 14th, 2:00 PM. Santa Claus will be present for the kids afterwards at the old Wool Market Elementary School gym, and if anybody wants to register to ride in the float, or ride in the parade, get with me, or get with Public, or Parks and Rec, or Sherry Bell. Roundabout, my favorite topic, the roundabout. Last night, they finally, finally turned on some lights at the roundabout at Shriners, not all of them, but some of them, well lit up for the ones that are there, hopefully in the next couple of days, some more lights will be turned on. You know, they've been closed at, well, they've been closed at night some, and not at night some, and they close early sometimes, so I, you know, which, I guess, leads me to my next MDOT. It's very frustrating, very embarrassing, when it seems like city officials find out that something as big as that roundabout with so much traffic daily, we don't know anything about it, you find out on Facebook, or you find out on Citizens of Wool Market, or do they not have any interaction with us at all?
Not much.
Is there anything we can, I've got a contact for a guy, now I can text him, and he texts me back pretty quickly, but he sure doesn't tell me anything in advance, and it's just embarrassing that, you know, people are asking me, 'cause it affects so many people, I mean, I use it multiple times a day, and I tell them something, and it's wrong, or I don't know, and then they send me, five minutes later, they send me something, they copied off of the internet, you know, it's just, and I, I get, I know they're MDOT, they're a state organization, but it's just absolutely, to me, it's ridiculous that they can't send out an email, that they don't have somebody that could send an email to somewhere, somebody here, you know, and I don't, maybe we can't do anything about it, but it'd be nice to...
We had an interaction with, there's a liaison for Coastal Municipalities Courtis, I think, as well as Billy Owen, who is the project engineer. I would offer, maybe, next week to meet, let's, let's have another meeting with, again, the liaison, I forget his courtis, I think is his last name, and then Billy Owen is the project engineer for the district. We'll see if we can meet together.
That'd be great. And I have, that's the contact I have now, is Billy Owen.
Yeah.
And he's been great responding to me quickly. It's just nothing in advance, and it'd be nice if the city knew something, what was, you know, what was going on in the city in advance. So, if we could do that, that'd be great, Mayor.
Do that.
And that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Shoemaker, I have a request. At the north end of Balmarle Avenue, there's an eight-foot fence, and I've been requesting that it be replaced, it's in poor repair, probably for several years. It'd be great if we could do something with that.
That's the one that we cut all the vegetation off of a while back?
You may have, I think so. Anyway, I've just had requests from residents out there. It's at the north end, and I mean, you got a little, a green space, and then you got the railroad tracks, but it'd be great if it could be prettied up a little bit. The next thing is vagrants and homeless, and, and the trash and human waste on the pedestrian bridge by the Small Craft Harbor, there's no way to, to secure that at night, I don't believe, is there, or do they secure it at night? I mean, it's, what I'm hearing is, it's a mess, and somebody's gotta clean it up, I don't know who cleans it up.
That's a hard one.
Thank you, Chief.
People sleep on, you know, sleeping on the beach, too, and that's, I think we need to, you know, combine with the sheriff and what we can do on the sand beach, I believe that's the challenge we're, we're having, I think, Chief.
Well, it's a struggle, because they will sleep there if they can, and, you know, my guys are through there all the time, trying to keep them on the move, but it is a struggle.
Who, who cleans that walkway if it needs to be cleaned up, or sanitized, or whatever?
Sand beach, I assume.
I mean, the port.
County, yeah, county, yeah.
Do we...
You talk about the walkway that the city, about a tour commission?
Right, that goes over Highway 90.
Highway 90, I-110.
Down the highway, that's sand beach.
Yeah.
All right, the Sand Beach Authority has to clean that walkway?
I think so.
Of course, of course.
I think so.
The port? Our employees that work?
I-10 loop.
We need the keys.
Okay.
Which walkway are you talking about?
Talking about the one there by, what is it, Legends, and it goes across Highway 90 to the memorial park there.
Yeah, yeah, that's us.
That's us, is that the, okay, it's just...
The Port Commission, the Port Authority, wrecked, their maintenance guys do that every day. They go there every day. Now, they're not down on duty on the weekends.
Right.
But they do a sweep every day, the port. And we see, the rationale is that we built that crosswalk using port funds.
Correct.
And therefore, it's considered part of the port.
Okay.
And the port maintenance guys go there every day and walk the thing and pick up the trash and run people off. Now, they can't be there 24/7, and we haven't been doing that on the weekends.
Right, and I understand that. Do they ever go up there and sanitize that? I mean, I'm just thinking if people are defecating and urinating in there, at some point, that's a problem.
I haven't been told that they have any problems like that recently.
All right, anyway.
I misunderstood, too, but I think Chief and I are on the same, on the same page about the walkway underneath I-110, 90 interchange has been a big problem with regard to homeless and sleeping and under and every angle.
Right, and that's a different issue.
But it's, you know...
Right, sure, it's still a concern.
We'll step off our patrols over that bridge, but I know they do it constantly.
It's just, I know it's an impossible task. I don't know how you stay on top of it. You can't be everywhere at once. I just wanted to raise that concern. Thank you. The, on the AHRC Architectural and Historical Committee or Commission, some of those terms have expired. We may want to go back and review when the reappointments are up. I think there may be several, and I know that some of them have to reside in historic districts on that commission, on the review commission. Thank you. And I know we're coming up on the end of the first quarter here at the end of December, and I know that we have this lease for police vehicles. Have any of those, have they started, begin, has the delivery of those vehicles begun? Are they, have we gotten any of those?
Chris was in, as far as the new vehicles we ordered?
We don't have a lease program.
No.
With, the only thing I think we're leasing right now is our motorcycles. That's the only lease program. We had proposed that at one time, but...
Oh, okay, I think we had approved that, too, with the bank or something. This was maybe three or four months ago?
I think we went to purchase the 14 vehicles in this budget, yeah.
There's no lease program.
Okay, so we're not leasing, so we're not leasing any, okay.
Just the motorcycles.
All right, thank you. Mr. Guines raised an issue, Mr. Abid, about point of order, and are we bound by Robert's Rules of Order?
Almost.
Or do you need a little time to research? I don't believe we are, but I could be wrong.
You're not bound, I mean, the council's never formally or officially adopted Robert's Rules of Order. I think we generally found this council's able to manage and control itself very well. You have other, I've watched other council meetings where they seem to all want to study it, so they can try to put points on others, but I think the way y'all are handling it is fine.
That's fine. I didn't think we were, I just wanted to be sure. Appreciate your suggestion, Mr. Guines. Want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, hope you're able to spend time with your friends and family later this week. All right, that concludes council reports. Now we'll move to the public agenda. We'll set aside up to 45 minutes for citizens' comments. Each individual be permitted up to three minutes to speak. When you're recognized, come up to the table. Be sure you sign in with your name and address, and please, you'll have to get close to the microphone to be heard, so be sure you're, it's close to you. And if you would, state your name, so that the council clerk can record your name accurately. With that said, is there anybody on my right, your left, that wishes to address the council? Nobody on my right, your left? Anybody on my left, your right? Anybody on this side of the room? Yes. Mr. Gimmel?
Yes, sir.
I didn't recognize you. You have a beard.
Yeah.
And a visor.
Ed Gimmel. On a positive note, when I was doing my morning walk, they were pressure washing the walkover pass that says Biloxi on it. I didn't see any signs on the truck, so I'm not sure who it was, but they were up there pressure washing it. I wanted to thank the mayor and administration and Public Works. They have landscaped the water street, the street that my family's been on for almost a century. There's only four houses on that street, so the sidewalk and the street is neglected because there's no homeowners there to keep it up, but they did a good job. Thank you, Mr. Lawrence, and thank you, Mayor, and the Public Works Department. And one other thing, as I walked the boardwalk in between the Small Craft Harbor and Harris, people, I guess, kids out of just being kids, they throw beer bottles out there, and I know that's, I know that's the Harrison County Sand Beach Authorities, but that's something that might bring to them and ask them to check that. They clean the sand, they roll the sand, but I don't believe they checked the actual boardwalk, but I wanted to say something positive about what's going on, and it looks like the Public Works has gotten after it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Gimmel. Anybody else on my left, your right, wish to address the council?
This is my first time at one of these meetings, so I may not know your protocol. And I don't even know if this is part of, the agency is part of Biloxi, but I don't know if this is part of...
Yes, ma'am, before you begin, if you'd state your name.
Oh, my name is Angela Brady.
Thank you, Ms. Brady.
But it is for an agency that's in the city of Biloxi, which is the Biloxi Housing Authority. So I don't even know if I can get any help here. It just may be outside of your jurisdiction, right?
But just speak your case, speak your case with your concerns.
This is better than that.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead, just tell us what your concerns are.
So I'm kind of like a, since I'm a recipient of the Housing Authority, but now that I see how it is ran, there's something certainly nefarious going on with inside that agency, and that can lead back to everything I've been hearing about our citizens here, our homeless citizens. Yet go I, because I could be in that position myself. If our agencies are failing us, and that's what's happening with the Biloxi Housing Authority. So I don't know if I can get any help here or not, but just me seeing, because I'm on the end of it now, I am very disappointed. I'm a senior, I'm a veteran, I'm a business owner, in some sense, sole proprietor, you know. So do I look like a person that, because we like to stigmatize people. They don't want to work, they're lazy. Sometimes people just need that next step, that helping hand, and that's what the Housing Authority is for, actually. It's almost like a servant-to type of organization. It really is. It is to help people get to a stable position. Everybody can't afford the marketplace. It's such thing called the working poor. They work. They work every day. Some of them work longer hours than most of us. My grievances is, is that you go through a process, and I know it's under the Housing Urban Development, I do know that, and I know that I can start with Washington, and I have, trying to, anyway. It's a long process. But what I find is that, okay, I've done everything, checked all your boxes. Would you please place me in a unit? This is what I get. We don't have any available. Is that accurate? Well, I can do my own investigation. All I have to do is just go look at the properties. There's many availabilities. The housing should be to its maximum. It should be maximum. We have a demand...
Ms. Brady?
For housing.
Your three minutes are up.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
But that is what it was about, Biloxi Housing Authority.
Is anybody else on my left? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Smith, and I know some of you, you look familiar.
If you would state your name, so...
Pauline Regina Smith.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
I'm a paralegal, and I also work with the Welsh people in Washington, DC. The reason why I'm here, because they told me to introduce myself to the councils and the other people that has something to do with the community. I also am a supporter. I also donate for the police department here in Biloxi, the fire department here in Biloxi, so I am looking out for the city of Biloxi. I am also to do the surveys on how and when what you're doing. What I mean by that is to see that you get the money for the state and your county where you need to use the money to spend, so you have to have a certain amount of time to get that money into Washington, DC. And if it don't go through, then that's money you lose. So I've been working here on that for the time I left in the Midwest. I also work with the president. I have worked with five presidents doing the same thing, donations, seeing that our city gets what it needs. That's what I'm doing. And I do report, the mayor, he has done a wonderful job, and I have reported all of that. They want to hear that. They want to know where money is going. They want to know what you need to beautify your county, your city, and you're doing a lot, a lot of building now in Mississippi. And I reported, and I saw some good results. So that's what I'm here, and that's what I'm doing, and I wanted to share that with you. I am working with the government and the president, who is very, very good president in understanding what the needs of Mississippi is, and so I wanted to put us on the map. And I have done that. It is including social security. We're working on laws to better for all of us. And one of my main things is, my last main thing is, I want to get our social security into a law. Thank you, and have a very pleasant day.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Is there anybody else on my left, your right, that would like to address the council? Anybody in the back? Last call, anybody? All right, citizens' comments are closed. We'll now move to the policy agenda. If the clerk will read item A, please.
Orders to amend Chapter 12 pertaining to private security services.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move it.
It's a motion by Mr. Glavine. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
By Mr. Guines. Thank you. This is just a first reading, and item B, which is also a first reading.
Orders to amend Chapter 12 pertaining to city identification services.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move it.
Mr. Glavine. Second by Mr. McGilvery. Again, this is a first reading. Thank you. If the clerk would read the next item, item C.
Orders to amend Chapter 2 pertaining to municipal facilities.
The motion was made by Mr. Guines, and there was a second by Mr. Glavine. Mr. Guines?
Okay, Mike, you want to explain the facilities, the codes?
I'll do it.
You got it, Peter?
Yeah. You know, this was, this is more of a follow-up to the rental agreements, the rental prices that we had just done a month ago, and as we did it, I think we had some, some things that needed clarification. There were some ballrooms in the civic center that we didn't have a price for at all, so we've added that. I think we didn't have a rehearsal fee, which we needed to add in and put the timing on the rehearsals. I think the main thing is at the AJ Holloway Parks, we had, we had a mechanism where you could just rent one field if you wanted, or two fields, and talking with the tournament people, we learned that you need to just rent all five or nothing, because it takes us, our employees would have to be there if somebody rents one field. If somebody rents two fields, that could, that could prevent a larger tournament coming in down the road, so I think those are the main changes, and then we tweaked the language about allowing for reduction of rental fees. We had all the nonprofit information in there, and we added a line that was a part of the statute as well, that this event must bring into favorable notice the opportunities, possibilities, and resources of Biloxi, and to help advance Biloxi's interest. So it's somewhat of a housekeeping, but we're just trying to, the main, the main purpose of this was to clarify that issue on the fields. We want to rent all five fields.
Okay, I'm satisfied.
Thank you, Mr. Guines. Mr. Glavine?
Mr. Abid, I have a question on when it comes to reserving the fields for practices. If somebody wants a field to practice on, they're not going to rent all five fields or four fields, so what is the mechanism for reserving a field for practice, not tournaments, but for practice?
Good, Jim. Thank you, Mr. Lee, for coming up.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon. Practices are totally different than the tournament rentals. We have some procedures in there to where teams can come to us, reserve the fields for practice, certain dates, certain times, so on and so forth, so it wouldn't be like a team just wanting to come practice would have to rent the whole complex. This is mainly geared toward, you know, these promoters, tournament coordinators that come in and want to use our facilities to host these big tournaments. Yes, sir.
Okay, so there is a distinguished between those?
Yes, sir.
And of course, as you look at your tournament season, you're going to protect those to anticipate the tournaments coming to you.
Absolutely. You know, every, all of this will run through our department, through the city, to make sure that we are, you know, providing the best scenario that we can for our groups, for other groups as well.
Okay. Mr. Lee, on a question.
Yes, sir.
If during the offseason, one team would go in and practice by itself?
Yes.
Does it need a fee? Or you have to be a local team from Biloxi, or anybody could use the field to practice on?
Right, yes, sir. And I mean, like I said, you know, it's all a process of contacting us, and as long as we have the space available, if it's not interfering with any of our programs that we're hosting as a city, then there shouldn't be any issue unless, of course, you know, unforeseen circumstances such as maybe maintenance on the field or something like that, but other than that, as long as they contact us, they can go through the process, no matter what time of the year it is, as long as it doesn't interfere with what we have going on.
So how does it handle the rest of the field, like Savaro, Megas, the other ball fields we have? Is that all part of that?
Right, yes, sir. We're trying to get all of our, all of our fields on the same concept. That way, we know exactly who's using our fields at what time.
Okay, but if you rent for a tournament strictly the one at the complex, it'd be those four fields, five, but you can't be renting Savaro, Megas, all the rest of the field?
Well, I mean, I guess you really could, as long as your tournament, the facility can accommodate what you're trying to do, you know? Like, if you have someone that comes up and may want to do a one-day kickball tournament or something like that with two or three teams, you could rent a smaller venue such as Savaro or Megas, but you know, but as far as the complex goes, you know, these are the perfect games, the USSAs, the big organizations that want to come into our area and host these, you know, 50, 60-team tournaments. That's mainly what that's geared for at the AJ. Yes, sir.
I don't see any big term, but I just want to make sure we're taking care of people to play here and to practice there.
Sure.
How's that written in the contract?
Those were already passed on the first draft, renting those, renting those smaller fields, and none of that's being changed or amended. All that's staying the same.
So a team that plays in Biloxi got to rent a field to practice on? Is that what you're saying?
Which field?
Yeah. I mean, one team wants to go practice, they got to pay to practice, to play ball in Biloxi. I mean, one team wants to go practice, they got to pay to practice, to play ball in Biloxi. That's not right.
Right, I guess it would have to be, I mean, right, it would have to be, what type of team are you talking about? Would it be like one of our league teams? Are you talking about? We don't, we would not charge, you know, we, during our seasons and all of that, we set up practice locations for all of our league teams to utilize our, our fields. Now, you know, we would have to look at that. If it's a outside team that would want to come in and use our fields, then we, they would need to go through that process. But when it comes to our teams, our city leagues, everything like that, we, we reserve the fields for them ahead of time during the season. Right. Sure. We have to utilize a lot of resources for one versus five fields. So like the mayor said, these organizations coming in that are trying to make money, you know, we want to make sure that they're renting the whole complex. And that way the, the, the resources we provide are adequate to what they need as well.
Those big tournaments, not a problem. I just know about individual people. Now, what if they do, they put a traveling team together for Biloxi? The big tournament, they, they'll rent all of what they got there.
Right.
I just want to make sure we're taking care of our local team and the local people. That's it. And I did a lot of traveling teams and having fifty, sixty-team, you got to have a lot of fields to play on, so.
Right, yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. I think, Mr. Glavine, you had concluded your comments.
I have.
Any other questions or comments from the council? I have a question on, mentions Pops Ferry Recreation Area. These are pickleball courts. I'm assuming it doesn't mention tournaments specifically, but I believe that was the intent. That you can rent a minimum of six courts. I think it's thirty-five dollars an hour for four hours minimum would guarantee availability. That's, I'm thinking about our regular pickleball players. They go out and they practice on these public courts all the time. But I, I would assume that this applies only to tournaments because I think they do have tournaments out there every once in a while, I believe.
Tournaments, yeah.
It is just.
But we, we also have some organizations that request to go out there during the week that we may start doing contracts with also that are not just citizens going out there. Like you might have a church that wants to go out there and, and use four courts or five courts.
Right.
Well, we, we just don't want to take away from the public.
No, exactly. You have to be able to schedule all this.
Yes, yes.
And you're trying to make it accessible to as many people, as many groups.
Yep.
As possible. Okay, that's all I had. Thank you. There being no further comments or questions, call for the question. All in favor of the ordinance is presented. It's approved on a seven oh vote. Thank you. That brings us to item D. If the clerk would read that item, please.
Resolution to rename two sections of Railroad Street to North and South Esters Boulevard.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move it.
Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Guines. Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, call Jerry. We seem to be all right, right, Jerry? You can come and make sure we got this straight. We stop in Crawford, Crawford to Oak Street is still be the railroad, but they have two, they have two businesses only right there.
On the north side, on the north side of the railroad track, from Crawford going east to Oak will remain Railroad Street. From Crawford going west to Dorries will change to North Esters Boulevard. And then on the south side, from Rosetti to Hoxey, about a two-block section there, will be South Esters Boulevard. But you're right, Mr. Lawrence, those two businesses that are there will still be on Railroad Street. Yes, sir.
The reason that was brought up, this is some of the packing, prep packing material that is, you know, it's about eighty to ninety thousand dollars worth of, of packing documentation, which lists.
Yes, sir.
Railroad Street. So this is a significant investment to a new facility on Railroad Street. So we're going to leave it on Railroad Street for a while, at least till this, this, I might pass this around, but.
Mr.
Big part of his operation. It ships all over the country.
Mr. White, the representative of Shemper came to the planning commission meeting and asked that that section be excluded and the planning commission voted that way. That's a recommendation that's before you. Anything else, Mr. Lawrence? Has it, Mr. Guines, anything?
Yeah, that's, that's a, a good deal. It gives us the consistency and especially it helps the post office regulate, you know, where the mail going. It makes it a whole lot easier on them. And then we, we accommodated the business because the business do spend a lot of money on what they are doing. And to make them to go back and redo all their stationery would not be good.
Not only stationery. That's why I passed that around, but it has the permit number and the location. So as these things are shipped all over the country, we don't have a, a conflict. So that's, it's a good, a good exception.
Yeah, and it's a win-win for everybody.
Yeah, and let me mention one other thing, Mr. Guines. On the north side, this section that's being changed, there are no houses that face.
Right.
That street. There are three houses on the south side of the railroad track that do face it. But there are some vacant lots along the north side and as houses are built on those, they'll have the new name assigned to them.
Right, consistency.
Anything else, Mr. Guines? Any other comments or questions from the council? All in favor of the resolution is presented. It's approved on a seven oh vote. Thank you. That brings us to the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move it.
By Mr. Lawrence and a second by Mr. Guines. Mr. Lawrence, go ahead. Any items?
The first one is, Fofa is G. They got eighty-six desktop computers. You have eighty-six employees in administration? What's eighty-six of them for?
No one's here for my T, but I think that's part of the twenty percent replacements over the years will have no longer, no older than five years' worth of life. So that's part of the, the replacement of the older PCs throughout the city.
That's right. It's just not one department.
Right.
And that's, that's why I was running, I don't, I know we didn't have nobody, eighty-six in one department, that's a lot of computers.
Yeah, no, it, there's, you know, a number of workstations that we want to replace at least twenty percent per year and that keeps us almost current with technology.
And the other one is L, is the, the business that the desk board said it was termite, are you trying to prevent that? L.
L.
In this case, this is adding a facility to the existing. Citywide termite contract.
But that's, that is, that's the desk board building.
Yeah.
Okay.
Desk board building wasn't ours at the time the contract was written. So it's.
Say again?
We didn't own it at the time.
We didn't own the building at the time when the contract was developed. So this is a change and there'll be more.
I just, I always use Bay Pest Control. I was just wondering why you have somebody different.
What this is, when we purchased the building, Dustport had had this treated for termites years ago. If you maintain an annual contract, they come out, they check the traps, they rebate it, it's relatively minor, it's three hundred and twenty dollars. We're going to assume that contract because if we do not, to get termite protection, we'll have to treat again, which is going to be somewhere to the tune of about eight thousand dollars. So this is three hundred and twenty to this.
Continue.
Prevent having to spend six thousand.
So we're not aided with termites, we're trying to stop it, using the same contract he had?
Yes, we're just assuming the contract, three hundred and twenty dollars a year.
All right. Thank you, Rachel. Any other items, Mr. Lawrence?
On the W and X, hey, Rachel, you rescinding one and you redoing the other one, so what are you doing different with them? One of you rescinding, I guess you're getting rid of that, so we're going to go to X.
This is totally my error. I had five versions of the same quote and when I typed that resolution, I grabbed the wrong version of the quote to type the resolution, so they didn't match. And we're just fixing that.
We made it straight.
And redo it so that it's absolutely clean, right version, right language.
All right, thank you.
Question while we're on that topic, do you, because I know this is a multi-year contract. Are we in year four? I think it was a five-year contract. Are we in, do you know off the top of your head what year we're in?
Well, with these, there was actually, I think it was eight different contracts.
Okay.
We are at the end, we've paid out the fifth, so we're expired. On the biggest one.
Okay.
This is doing is it's wrapping everything into one.
Right.
So that we're not doing and trying to keep up with eight different and everything is renewed annually and upgraded.
Gotcha. All right, thank you very much. All right, excuse me. Go ahead, Mr. Lawrence. That's it? Mr. Guines, anything?
I have nothing.
Nothing, okay. Ms. Newman, anything? Mr. McGilvery, anything? Mr. Glavine, anything? Mr. Shoemaker, I'm counting on you to have something.
Certainly, why not?
There you go.
Number, or J, and that's regarding the one point three million of the Pops Ferry extension. That, I know we're moving that money. Is that something? We're moving that money from, yes, sir. J?
Right. Mr. Mayor, if you, Mr. Mayor, if you get closer to the microphone, this is part of history here.
Because it's a project.
It was a project that was going to be.
Matched up with the county.
With the county ARPA funds. The county can't execute that ARPA, ARPA funds.
Go ahead, Ms. Labata.
Yeah, so it was the, the county, when all the ARPA funds came, the county designated us one point five million, I think total, and we had to match one point five million. Apparently the county doesn't, isn't ready to move forward with that money. We've got to spend our money, there's deadlines. And we needed to be able to cover the CSX fees that were associated with Pops Ferry Extension that were not already in the budget. So we're, we're taking our money out of that Tanglewood Sewer Project and moving it over to Pops Ferry to cover CSX.
Yeah, Christie, let, let me clarify that too. The total amount of, in the contract was about a half a million. We, after the, was awarded, we'd get a notification and that those charges from CSX without any full warning was one point five million. So this is part of the channeling of that money so we can move forward. And so they were using some leverage to stop it. But you know, there was an additional million dollars that came out of the blue.
That's right.
Without really justification.
That's right.
From anyone, that they decided that you got to give us upfront the money in order to go forward.
Yeah.
And they, they had leverage on us, but.
Yeah, they were.
We will return the leverage.
Right, that's right. So that, that's right. They, we had five hundred thousand built into the construction contract and all of a sudden we got this from CSX, like he said, for one point five. And they're not letting us work on their right-of-way until we execute this agreement and send them this money. So that's kind of why the last minute movement.
A bit like him, though.
That, yeah, I believe it. That was my next question I was going to ask about the CSX and I saw that it was a retainer. So they made us give that money upfront or show that we had that money.
That's what they make us do, yes. On every project that we have to work on their right-of-way, we have to give them the money. And then every month, they send us invoices, basically deducting, there's zero invoices, but they deduct off of what we've sent them. And when they run out of money, they send, they ask for more.
And that's, that's the way they normally do business, I guess?
Yes, they do all the same thing like in Walt's projects for the infrastructure. That's how all their projects operate, unfortunately.
Okay, thanks, I appreciate it. Thank y'all. That's all I have.
Thank you. All right, and I have no questions. Thank you. All right, we'll call for the question on the consent agenda and then we'll check to see if individual council members want to note their exceptions to some. All in favor of the consent agenda is presented. It's approved on a seven oh vote. Mr. Lawrence, are there any exceptions which you, or items you oppose?
None.
None. Mr. Guines?
None.
Ms. Newman, Mr. McGilvery?
None.
Mr. Glavine?
No exceptions.
No exceptions.
Thank you, Mr. Shoemaker, and I have none. That brings us to code enforcement and mercifully, there are none. Imagine that.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving indeed. All right, that brings us to the routine agenda. I'll entertain a motion.
I move that.
By Mr. Lawrence. A second by Mr. Guines. Go ahead, Mr. Lawrence.
We talked to Walt, but on the X, Fofa, we have, we're not paying any bills at all. No, I'm not, I'm talking about.
No, he's, Mr. Lawrence is talking about there's no, there's no docket. From time to time, council meetings, we, yeah, we don't have, we don't have any dockets. And I think it's because over time, the business manager has kind of lined things up so we pay certain things either the second or the third meeting of the month. In other words, typically there's only one docket, sometimes there are two.
Bender knows you only get one shot at a docket.
So this has happened before where we've not had a docket. It's happened several times previously, but it's not anything exceptional. What else, Mr. Lawrence?
Well, give me some good news with update.
Well, here's the good news. In the Mississippi PA, the MEMA website, the city has close to seven hundred and ninety thousand dollars that's in the system. It's in what we call step three of five. It's been there for four days. That's waiting on the guard, which is the governor's authorized representative to approve it. Once he does that, it'll move into step four and after that point, we usually get the monies ten to fifteen days after. So we've got close to seven hundred and ninety thousand there. That'll be followed by another four hundred nine thousand dollars right after that.
And I think you're sitting with about one point five three.
One point three, one five million as of the docket on.
At, at our burn rate, we're more than sixty days ahead. Okay.
Yes.
All right. Well, the, the other question is, have we dealt with knee case as far as fixing these people's property? Have y'all met with, did you meet with them again?
We're going to meet with them. I'm going to meet with them. Peter's going to meet with them. Walt's going to meet with them. We're assembling the things that are known to be video or identified as problems and correctional problems with the end date, you know, how they're going to get there. So the idea is to figure out when they're going to be finished with not only those crossovers and sidewalks and curbs, but you know, the main thing with the problems that have been identified through cameras and things that would impact our longevity. We don't want to come back a year later and tear up something because we didn't identify, it was leaky. So we identified, Walt, I think about twenty items in, in the sewer system and about forty items in storm drain that need to be corrected.
That plus we're missing quite a number of videos from knee case that he owes the city to show if the systems he's put in are acceptable to the city. So as the mayor said, he is going to hold a meeting with the contractor and see if we can get this thing off.
Excuse me, that was me. I got your body's attention. But part of, to finish.
I believe that was correct.
To finish this, this whole process up, I think the last final push is to give them a checklist to correct anything. And there's a point in time where if we identify something from the checklist, the days do not run. Correct me if I'm wrong. Well, once we, that's the last process to give them the heads up that these are problems, fix it and we'll move forward with the final surfaces and so forth. Am I correct?
So there's.
We're going to present a checklist, yeah, but we're going to do that.
We have not, but there's numerous issues that they need to correct before we get to that, what they call punch lists. So we're not even at that point yet. He's got to make the corrections or come up with a suitable alternative that the city's willing to accept. And then at that point, we do a punch list of any minor items that might be out there that remains to be completed. So we're not even at that point yet. Really what it's, what it's going to take is this meeting to get, find out what's the true intent of getting this project complete. And that's going to take the administration's assistance.
The last question, Fofa and Walt, is I've been down there a lot, ain't nobody working. Now, he done moved his crew off the thing, so nobody.
Well, we are that and that's what we're trying to press our issue.
Because I mean, that's a lot of people come, they could come back and put the top on.
Add questions, you know, we had this thing with Oscarinda over and over and over again. We don't want to hear that now. We don't want to have to, and I think I liquidated damages with the tune about sixty-six hundred per, per day?
Thirty-five hundred per day.
I'm talking about Oscarinda was sixty, seventy thousand a day. Not sure, but you know, that's our leverage to press this issue.
I remember them days.
Trying to, but we're going to be dealing, you know, in a, in a lot of ways, but we want this to be reconciled. We want this thing to be done.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, anything else, Mr. Lawrence?
That's it.
All right, Mr. Guines, anything?
None.
Any other questions or concerns on the routine agenda from the council? There being none, call for the question. All in favor of the routine agenda is presented. It's approved on a seven oh vote. Thank you. There's a motion to adjourn by Mr. Glavine and we'll all second that. We'll adjourn today in memory of Kenny Pat.